And Appointments Policy 1234. We're adding to the Standing Board Committee the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And who is chairing that committee?
I am.
Would you like to explain the purpose of that committee?
Well, we are actually going to be having a presentation a little bit later on under Committee Reports, so I will hold until then if that's okay.
That's perfect, thank you. And then we have a committee, but we've changed the title of it. And the goals, and Mrs. Stephanie Adams is chairing that committee, so would you like to share something about that committee?
The Family Communications Committee, really the only reason for the change is that it used to be the Parent Communications Committee, and families look very different now. And so we wanted to be more inclusive with the title because students go home to different types of families every day. But the idea is still the same, it's about improving communication between schools and families.
And we were having a meeting tomorrow.
Correct.
Yes. So, the Title IX Committee, and you're chairing that one as well, Mrs. Ziegstad?
I am.
So, are you reporting on that one later on?
No real report, other than that we will be meeting, well, I can give that report now. We are expecting our new Title IX Director.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
They'll be at the principal's meeting.
That's awesome. So, Mr. Lewis will be starting tomorrow, and we will be having a meeting next week.
And your meeting is, you can watch it online, isn't it?
Yes, we have it televised.
Okay. And the other committees normally take minutes and have them posted, so we keep other committee or community members informed. If you turn to page, well, you don't have pages. The ad hoc committees, we have two new committees. The Dress Code Policy Committee, and it shows the board members. So, I know that Mrs. Adams, Tabitha Adams, has said we are still getting input from parents and community members about the dress code and their suggestions, and that's good. Have you had a chance to meet yet?
We have not. We were looking in light of the storm, we were looking at the fourth week of the month, around the 25th of September. We are almost done putting that committee together. We'll be seeking a community member and also some students. This policy really affects them more than anybody else, and we really wanted to help them, have them help us reach a decision.
And the CTEC Committee, Mr. Wortman. You want to say anything about your committee?
Nope.
Okay. The Williston Exploratory Committee, we're going to delete that from the policy because that no longer is in effect. And I think still there were minutes posted that if people want to go back and read the history of it, they certainly can. So, the rest of the policy remains the same. We just want to waive first reading so that we can get this out and get it online, so that the community can see the changes, that we have additional committees, or the different purposes now and focuses.
Move to waive first reading?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
So, we need to then approve the policy.
There a motion to approve the policy as written?
Moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. All right, moving on to Item D, Proposed Makeup Days, Dr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. As you all know, the district has nine different calendars. And we are going to bring a formal request to the board at next month's meeting. But I did want to share with you our initial conversations and plans in terms of making up the two days that we lost as a result of Hurricane Dorian. For CTEC, we are looking to make December 16th and December 17th student days. Those teacher workdays would then be moved to the end of the calendar for teachers. So, teachers would not lose any employment opportunities, and students would not lose any student days, except for that additional optional teacher workday that was given. For WECs, we are looking at making October 4th and October, excuse me, and December 20th student days. Those teacher workdays would also be moved to the end of their calendar. For Isaac Bear, November 1st, which is currently a designated teacher workday, would be made a student day. And then December 19th would be made a student day. And again, those workdays would be moved to the end of the calendar. For Restart, our Restart Year-Round Schools, which specifically are Freeman and Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, we would add two additional student days where they currently have intercession days. That would be September 30th and October 1st. There would not be any need to move any workdays because we are taking two of their intercession days and making them student days. For the Freeman Year-Round Pre-K Calendar, it would be the same dates. It would be making September 30th and October 1st as student days. For our Year-Round, it's a little more complicated. We would take December 13th, which is already a student day, but it's a half day, that would be a full day. And then December 16th, which is a teacher workday, would be a student day. And then December 17th, which currently is an intercession day, would be made a half day for students. So, that would give those students those two days missed, and again, not remove any work opportunities from teachers. And the one teacher workday that we would make adjustments with would be moved to the end of their calendar. And then for Traditional, which of course covers the bulk of our schools, we would take January 2nd and January 3rd, which are currently teacher workdays, and they would become student days. Those teacher workdays would be moved to the end of the calendar. And then that would also be reflected in the district's pre-K calendar. So, again, January 2nd, January 3rd would be made student days. And then in regards to Lake Forest Academy, which is our ninth calendar, those students already receive an additional 15 student days beyond what we do for our traditional calendar. So, we would not be making any adjustments with them. Actually, we would reduce the number of additional days those students receive from 15 to 13. And that would be the same with teachers. So, teachers, their additional days, 15 days of employment, would be reduced from 15 days to 13 days. So, we would not make any adjustments in their calendar. And we will bring this as a formal recommendation with edits to the calendars, so that they can be published for the public to view at our next meeting. However, we would need to go forward with the changes with Freeman and Snipes. And I'm spoken to both those principals, consulted actually with all the principals about these changes, except for Traditional, because of course we have so many of those folks. And they very much support the recommendation that we're making. So, glad to answer any questions or take any feedback that you may have.
Didn't we have any days built into the calendar already?
So, we do have some days built into the calendar. And what we receive actually are 15 teacher workdays that, well, it used to be 15 teacher workdays, and now they have 10. And we try to spread them throughout the year. But as you can imagine, the bulk of those go to the beginning of the year where we had three days. So, that left two days in that first semester. And then we've got two days built into the second semester because we, you know, it's so hard to predict, you know, what might happen in terms of a weather event or some other type of occurrence. And then we do have a couple of days built to the end. It used to be, you know, back when I started teaching, we had 20 teacher workdays available to us. That was reduced to 15. And then when there were changes in the requirements for the number of instructional days that students were to attend school, five additional days were taken away. We do build back some of that time back into our calendar. But it still leaves us with a really, really tight window unless we really want to eliminate all training opportunities during the school year for teachers.
We missed three days this time, but we're only scheduling two of them back in.
Yeah. And one thing that we really guarded very carefully was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Having sat on the Calendar Committee for quite a few years, that typically is the one thing that folks hold most dear, is having that Wednesday. And then also, the other one is the Monday following Easter, which often we end up taking from them because things do happen in the spring of the year. But we did try to protect that Wednesday before Thanksgiving with these calendar recommendations.
We're still not through hurricane season.
No.
And we typically will have a, of the 10 years I've been here, we've had some winter event eight out of those 10 years where it's cost us today, at least one.
What happens if we make these changes and then the state comes back and says, "Forgiven"?
They're not going to forgive these days. This is not, Dorian was not Florence. So, three days fall, I mean, you've got districts in the mountains who missed three days in a row for snow. So, this is not an extended piece like it was for Florence. Presented as information, it'll be a formal, and we'll see if we get any feedback on that as well over the next month.
Do we have to take action on those two?
Yes.
On Freeman and?
Well, given that the principals support it, they're going to communicate it to their parents and to their teachers. I think that we're fine. We found ourselves unfortunately in this situation before with so many changes evolving with our calendar. And what I'll say also is, you know, it could have been years past where we've actually had to put all of our workdays at the beginning of the year. But at least this year, we did have a couple that we can make up the days and not be so disruptive to schools or to reduce the holidays that we have available to our families.
And guys, this is just another piece for calendar flexibility.
Yes.
We had more days at the front end. I mean, this is two years in a row where we've literally been in school a week and then out. It gets frustrating sometimes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Item E, Employee Leave Policy, Dr. Wellmers?
Typically, Mary Hazel would have done this policy, but she has to teach a class tonight. Several of you called me about.
She said.
Several of you called about questions related to what happens to teacher pay during situations like this. So, Dr. Wellmers is going to walk you through that process.
Well, and you've touched on some of it before. And I think the main thing that teachers want is often the very thing we can't do, and that the state law does not allow us to forgive workdays or employee days. It does allow us to forgive student days, but you can't forgive a workday unless, you know, the governor and the General Assembly move on it. They're the only ones that can overdo their own law to do that, as happened last year. And so it is that there's a comparison between this year and last year. And a lot of teachers would like those days to be forgiven. And certainly understand that because, you know, it was a very generous thing to do last year. But it's not up this year, unless we're surprised, and it is a possibility, but probably not much of one. What we do require is that teachers, when we swap days, we're swapping in most calendars, and it's basically the traditional calendar, the 2nd and 3rd of January, which are workdays, which were already paid days, with these two days moving forward. So, teachers would have to take annual leave for the two days that they missed. The state requires, and it's under law, that anytime there's a weather event that gets in the way of that, the teacher has to use a form of leave or be docked without pay on that day. So, teachers were moving this forward to the two workdays in basically a swap. So, the teachers will have a chance to make that up, but they have to use leave on the days that they missed. And most of them don't want to, they don't want to have to use their leave, but we're stuck on it right now. We would have done the same thing last year had the state not forgiven those days. And we've been through that so many times with snow, where teachers want that, those days forgiven. Certainly understand, but we're a unique state in that we have annual leave and personal leave for teachers. That's a fairly unique concept, and so it actually works in their favor in the long run. But having to use it is a painful thing, and I certainly understand that. And we do work with employees who may be new, who don't have enough, or we look at trying to work those days in with their principal, who maybe don't have enough leave that that would be an unpaid leave. We try to work with them, but for the most part, they can cover it.
For new teachers, we would advance them their leave until they earned it later in the year.
But is that a policy for all state employees or just teachers? Because?
It's all state.
It's just teachers, it's not me.
It's just teachers.
That's a good question.
No, and it is for teachers. It's part of the Benefits Employee Manual for teachers in the state and for school personnel. So, I think that, and I actually looked at the state guidelines today just as a comparison, and you're right. It's, they don't have that requirement of other state employees. Because a lot of them don't earn that same thing within the given time that a teacher does.
John, I just want to be 100% clear for our teachers. This in no way, shape, or form is a policy that we, as a school board or a school system, can do anything with.
It is in our policy, but it is based on state policy. Where this is one of those where we're following exactly what the state tells us to do. And Mary Hazel was here, she could give you all the numbers, much neater than I can. I always work with talking with folks on the phone trying to explain this, because this is what you have to do. But it is state law, and it is not our policy. We didn't generate this. This is, and other systems are having to do exactly the same thing on their laws.
So, we cannot change it?
No, we cannot change it. You cannot undo state law on this. Shouldn't the General Assembly vote and go back to forgiven days, that would be the change.
Well, I would urge every teacher, and, you know, I myself will make a phone call. I think when there's a hurricane, that is just an absolutely horrendous policy. I mean, point blank. I don't know any other way to say it, and I know it's not your fault, but it should be fixed. And I will work to fix it as much as I can do, and I hope every teacher does, because that is an absolutely horrendous policy.
And Dr. Markley touched on it a little bit too. The basis of this is still the inflexibility we have in our calendar. You're looking at 215 days for teachers during the year. So, even when you look at these kind of days and how we use them, we have a very hard time trying to fit them in and benefit the teacher. And I know they don't always think of it that way. They're looking at exactly what's going on in their personal and professional lives like they should. But that is part of the thing, is we're stuck in those days.
So, you're saying that if we do want to go by, find a way to change it, we'd have to contact our legislators?
Correct.
Yeah. So, that's what you're saying, Nelson, to have them call the teachers, contact them?
Please, absolutely. Advocate yourself.
We have three, was it, well, we have, everybody should have at least one representative and a state senator. At least two people in contact.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Item Nine Superintendent's Report?
Yeah, three quick things. One that you'll be seeing next month, I do want to give you a heads up on. The governor passed a reduced testing bill. Most of that does not go into effect until next year. There is one part of that though that will impact us this year, and that is senior project. There was a, there's now a requirement that if you do senior projects, you have to reimburse students $75 for materials.
Whoa.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess we need to get on that discussion really quick.
Wow, is that like all of our seniors?
It is not a, it is not tiered to free and reduced lunch or anything like that. We graduated, how many folks last year, guys, about 3,000?
That's a big chunk of them.
Dr. Markley, it actually is connected to students with, who are identified as disadvantaged. And we actually have one high school in our district. So, every senior at the high school, because that's a CEP school, we would have to reimburse those students for that. And that was not anything that we built into the budget for this year.
So, we are going to recommend, we're one of the few districts who still do a senior project, we're going to recommend the elimination of senior project.
I can hear the cheering in the distance.
Now, I think senior project still has value, but, so, we're going to meet with principals tomorrow and tell them this is most likely coming. But I also want the caveat with seniors, they still need to do a research project, and they still need to do something related to a public speaking. Because those are two key components of that project.
They can do that without having to give them the $75.
Yep. So, that will be announced tomorrow, but it will not be official policy until next month when we bring it to you. Because literally, it was, he signed it Tuesday on Hurricane Day, basically. Second, speaking of the hurricane, I really have to give a shout out to maintenance and the folks in the shelters who worked those. We only had to contract $20,000 for folks outside of our system. The rest of the work was done by the folks in Eddie's shop and maintenance to get our schools back up and running. Eddie, wanted to give a quick rundown of what we had for damage?
Yeah, most of the, most of the storm damage was some minor roof leaks, minor wind damage, you know, trees, limbs, things like that. But I just echo what Dr. Markley said in that school principals, custodial staff and our maintenance staff, they were, they were here, they were out at the schools. And, you know, just to be able to address all of those items, I mean, within your own staff, after going through something like Florence was rather refreshing. It was a welcome change. They did a great job, I can't say enough about them.
Final piece, you'll get a full report next month on the accountability update from the testing office and Dr. Murray. But two numbers stood out. One is our graduation rate is the highest it's ever been. It is the first time it's ever exceeded the state average. And then also, our African-American graduation rate, for the first time ever, jumped over 80% to 83%. And so that gap there has closed significantly. There's still a lot of work to do, still not happy with the accountability model. I look at a school like Freeman that made tremendous growth, made tremendous growth with African-American students, and it's not reflected in that school grade. We had a couple of elementary schools also that are probably top five in the state. So, we'll hit those highlights next month, but that's two numbers I wanted to point out this month. That's Superintendent's report.
Positive information.
Dr. Markley? I just had a quick question for you. I know you addressed this with the board, but just to give an overview to the community, the migrant farmer form, we've got so many questions, you could just briefly say something about what that was.
Yeah. If you've worked in the rural part of the state, that we have a large peach area, we've got some coastal areas, that other farmings, they have a large migrant farm population that come in during the farm season. And the federal government actually gives additional funds to districts for that. We've never sent that form out because the handover doesn't, we would never receive any money. But last year, as part of a Title I audit, it was noted as an exception that we didn't send that form out. So, for the first time ever, we sent the form out, and of course, some folks were surprised to see the form. Dr. Smith, did anyone want to add to that?
No, I think you captured it well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Markley. Item 10, Board Chairperson's Report. I just want to echo what Dr. Markley said. I want to extend a big thank you to all the volunteers at the shelters and at the EOC. It was definitely a well-oiled machine on all levels. And, you know, we, Mr. Ivanbark and I went over to Eaton and to Porter's Neck. And at Eaton, we went into the cafeteria, and there was a cafeteria worker there from Mary C. Williams and from CTEC. So, people came from all over to help and to work. And it was really great to see everyone pulling together. So, and I'm really, my heart goes out to everybody in the Bahamas that experienced such a horrific storm. Everybody on the Outer Banks that I think also experienced a lot of problems from the storm. And I hope everyone stays safe the rest of the hurricane season, definitely. That, I know that we've learned our lesson last year, and it was definitely in play this year, but I hope we don't have to use it again.
At its peak, we had almost 500 folks in shelters.
Yeah. But it was, it was moving right along, everyone knew what to do, and it was, it was.
I've never seen so many different entities, and you couldn't separate them, you couldn't tell who was who. Health Department, the, what's the crowd downtown?
Emergency plan work.
Yeah, county government is the ones who operate the shelters on the macro scale. I mean, they're technically in charge, but our folks are part of the support team along with DHS, with sheriff's departments there, school nurses come in to staff them.
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army, there, I mean, there's a wide range of folks who go to work those shelters.
The only other thing I wanted to mention was, I do want to just have everyone think about this possibility for our teachers and personnel, when we do schedule these half-day workdays in the midst of the storm or at the beginning of the storm, the possibility of doing a work from a safe place option. Some other counties do it. And some teachers brought it up to me, it wasn't my idea. But where we give the teachers and our personnel options of documenting what they're doing from home, so we're not causing them to have to come in, be on the roads, possibly be in an unsafe environment, but they still can get work done and get credit for it. So, I'd like to explore that option if possible, you know, maybe for a half-day workday, like what we had on Wednesday. So, if they're not, they don't need to be at the school, they don't need to be out on the roads. But it gives them that option, and if we can work on a way of making sure that they can document what they're doing. So, it gives, you know, us some accountability, but it gives them that ability to be home but still be productive. So, I know other counties do it, but I'd like to see if we can maybe explore that option. Yeah, that's it. I don't know, any feedback on that from anyone?
I 100% agree with you. I think it says a lot about trust from your employer. You know, we are living in the digital age, and there's, at this point, if there's danger outside, but teachers are still able to grade papers, they're able to get on the internet. I think it's a great idea and a great option for them to be able to do so.
Absolutely.
I support it.
All right, good. Well, maybe we can look into that for the future. Item 11, Committee Reports, Equity and Inclusion. Dr. Smith, that is you.
So, good evening to you all. There are three pieces to the presentation that I have for you this evening. And I'd like to start with the mission statement. And this is just a draft mission statement for the Board Equity and Inclusion Committee. And this mission statement is coming out of the work of the Equity Work Group. And so, as the committee begins its work as a formal board committee, we wanted to offer this as a beginning point for that work. But we also understand that the board committee itself, once it has its full membership, will need to make a decision about what it wants its mission to be. But we had a larger group work on this, we brought it to the whole group, and then we had another smaller group fine-tune this as a recommendation. So, I wanted to share this with the board and the community this evening. The second piece that I wanted to share is the application. And we do have this in a Google Form, so it is ready to go live on our website, just as soon as we get the go-ahead. And this is the application for community inclusion as a part of the School Board Equity and Inclusion Committee. And so, if we can kind of just scroll slowly through the application, you can see that there are some questions that are optional. And the reason for that, we want folks to be comfortable in what they share, but we also think it's important to ensure that membership is diverse on this committee. And then we spent some time really thinking about how to ask the question, because we wanted it to be open and inviting, and open and inviting to folks who may consider themselves as trained professionals, but also, and have done work or researched or studied in this topic. But also, open and inviting for those folks who may come to this just simply for personal reasons. Um, and just simply because they have a passion for this work. And so we will, um, establish that application period, we'll make that available. And then, of course, the committee itself will choose the two members or three members from the community that will be a part of the Board Equity and Inclusion Committee. So any questions about the mission statement or the application itself? And again, we went through a process in terms of putting this together. Um, I want to say this probably is about the fifth or sixth iteration of this document itself. And, and appreciate all the feedback that we've received, um, in putting this together. If not, then I'd like to transition to, um, just an updated PowerPoint. So the template may look pretty familiar and, um, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to update the date to this date. We were planning this presentation for last week. But what I wanted to do is to share with you a little bit, um, of, of what has happened since the last time I had the opportunity to, provide information to you about the work of the, of, around equity and inclusion within the district. So this graphic, um, you know, and I saw it in Ms. Askew's presentation, which I appreciated. I was saying to myself, great minds think alike, right? But it looks slightly different because we've added a different, an additional bubble. And so when you see the arrow pointing is in terms of student engagement. So we began this work with our work group. We knew as a part of our strategy, we wanted to make sure that there was a community con- connection. And then we also recognized that there was a need for professional development and training for our teachers as well as our, um, principals and other staff members and also the community. And so now the evolution and where we're going is in terms of student engagement. So we've added that part to, to our strategy and our work. And so here we've captured it again, you can see, um, on the fourth level, um, we're looking right now at student training opportunities. So we want to make sure that our young people, who this impacts again directly, um, have the opportunity to receive training. Um, we want to, 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 um, help to elevate their voice, um, and make sure that they've got the foundational, um, experiences and knowledge that we're doing also, we're, we're providing also for our principals, our teachers and the community. Um, and then also we're beginning to have conversations about student equity teams in our schools. So again, this represents the work around what we want to have with, with our students. And then we're beginning our conversations about a student survey because we need to understand what's most important to our student in order to be responsive to them. And then what I, I don't think I've shared with you before, but I wanted to make sure that I shared with you tonight. Our district has a strategy around this work and that strategy, um, I've shared with you on the slide is first and foremost to get proximate to the problem. And this is taken directly from the work of Brian Stevenson, if you're familiar with him as an author. And it really means to get close to the issue. So if we are to understand how to address the, uh, the issue of equity, inclusion, diversity in our community, then we have to get close to the issue. We have to begin to understand it from the position of those folks who are being impacted by this directly. Also a part of our strategy is to engage in more learning. And so I've shared with you, I think throughout all of my presentations, opportunities that we've put in front of our folks. Some of them optional opportunities and some are non-negotiables in terms of our work around implicit bias with our principals and our teachers. But we have to engage in more learning. We have to become even better educated around the work of inclusion, around the work of equity, around the work of diversity. And then also, and hopefully you, you've seen this through our work, is we have to engage the community to change the narrative in order to be able to sustain this work. I think, um, in one presentation I shared with you a graphic, in the school system sits here, the community is the larger whole. And so if we want to sustain what we're doing within the system, we have to have the community to be a part of that. And I'm really excited to share with you, just earlier this week, we were, Dr. Markley was present, um, and, um, other folks from my team. And we met with some of our community partners around this work. We had the hospital in the room, we had folks from Live Oak Bank in the room, we had folks from Step Up Wilmington in the room. We had, um, Mr. Mel from Community Conversations in the room. And what we were talking about is developing a strategy for the community. Because we don't want this work to simply rest with the school system. You know, the su- school system really truly is a reflection of the community as a whole. So if we want to see changes in our community, if we want to see, um, more inclusion within our community than, or within our school system, then we have to work and support that in our community as well. And so it was very encouraging to have those folks in the room. Also present, um, were at least four folks from UNCW. Um, we had Van Dempsey, um, who's the dean of the, uh, the Watson School of Ed- Education in the room. And then we also had representation from the community college. So it, again, very, very encouraging. Also as a part of our strategy is transparency. So anyone who asks, anyone who wants to know, um, we're willing to share, we're very transparent in where we're going, what we're trying to do. And, um, how we are trying to be as inclusive of all groups in this work. And then also engage with experts. And again, very excited to share, we had our first, um, book study. It was a virtual book study with, uh, Mr. James Ford this afternoon. And, um, you know, the texts and the phone calls and the conversations I've had from principal were very, very powerful. Just folks are still very encouraged, folks are still very engaged and, and very, um, enthusiastic about this work. Um, and, and we all know that when people get excited about things, really, really good things happen.
Dr. Smith, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
What, what narrative are you trying to change or is the, the committee gonna try to change within the school system? And what are some specific examples of, um, ways that we think that we are not being inclusive?
So I think part of the narrative is if folks believe that we're not meeting the needs of all children, um, if, if, if folks believe that.
When you say all children?
All students, so students with disabilities, African-American students, marginalized students, um, academically gifted students. I think there are narratives that rest within our community that there are some groups of students that we're serving better than others. Um, and I think that there are just some perceptions out there. And so I can tell you, you know, as a parent, and I can tell you as a deputy superintendent, and I can tell you as the lead learner for the district, that we're doing a great job with, with our children. But it matters less what I say, but what it matters to me greater is what the community says. So if as a parent, you don't think your child's needs are, are being met, then that's what I have to be responsive to. And so, you know, what I hear is, well, of course you're gonna say that, you work for the school system. But if someone, um, just like we had our folks from VoC Rehab, but if our folks from VoC Rehab are saying the school system is a great partner, they're in the community. There's gonna be greater credibility in what they say about the work that we do. So it really is engaging partners like that, um, to really change any negative narrative that might be in the community about folks that we are not, um, serving, um, to the best of our ability. And of course, we're not one hundred percent, you know, I tell my folks all the time, you know, it's not, for me, it's not about perfection. It's just to be better than I was the day before. And so I think it is about being better at what we do. And so for us, you know, we can, um, you know, sing it from the rooftops, but I want it to come from the community. I want people to come to us and say, you know, how much they appreciate what they, what they see happening for, for their children personally in, in our system.
So it's less about changing and more about exposing different community, parts of the community to what we're actually doing? Is that, is that fair to say?
So, and I, I think it definitely is about engaging the community and, and bringing them in so that if there is something that's being said negatively, then they're gonna be the ones who are going to, to, to shut that down. They're gonna be the ones who are, are, are going to end that conversation. And so, yeah, so I think there are, you know, and, and not to in any way say again that we're one hundred percent, but I think there are just so many incredible things that are happening for our students and families that I don't think people know enough about. And so again, you know, changing that narrative to really sustain that work. It has to be, um, not only what we're promoting, but what the community is receiving and what the community is, is giving back to us as well. Yeah, thank you. Um, and then again, transparency, oh, well, and then engaging with the experts. And as I said, just very, very powerful experience, um, that I think our, our folks were a part of with, with Mr. Ford. Um, and then here, just again outlining what we've done. So we sit within the, the, uh, the community as a whole. And so what we've done on the community side of things, you can see in terms of groundwater training, gross equity discussion series, board committee representation. Those are the things that we've done to bring the community into this work. But also, um, as I said, the meeting that we just had, the community training partnership. So looking at bringing the community either even further into the district through those partnerships. And then also the community piece is recruiting young people from our, our community into this work as well. So that they can impact the, the, the youth of the, of, of, our student youth. And I share this example, um, you know, when I stand in front of a group of sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, you know, they're very respectful, of course. But they also recognize that I don't connect with them in the same way that maybe a nineteen-year-old or a twenty-year-old or a twenty-one or a twenty-two-year-old might do so. And, and if you remember just, I think it was last month, we had Hannah present to us. And you immediately knew, well, one, she wants to be a teacher, which, you know, just elevates her tremendously there. But you knew immediately that if you could have her be in front of a group of her peers, you know, maybe, you know, juniors or seniors in, in high school, she can impact them and, and, and engage them in ways that I, regardless of titles or degrees, could, could ever do. And so we're looking to do that, that same recruitment. We had a young lady leading by the name of Renee, who is a former Laney graduate, um, and also a graduate of Penn State, who has moved back to our community. I think she's actually working in one of after-school programs who has interest in this work. And so we're trying to engage young people in our community like that to bring them into this fold so that we can engage our, our young people. So really today, the big piece about this is that expansion of this work into the student piece along with sharing with you that, you know, we're ready to launch our application for our committee and that we're ready to present the committee with the mission statement that we drafted for them.
What about feedback from the community to this group as far as looking at what it is that you're trying to achieve and maybe adjusting according to their needs?
So what we've done, I would say to you, is we've not done any formal surveys. And again, remember that, you know, we launched really into this work in March. So really it has been about laying the foundation, um, and then articulating our strategy. So in essence, we've gotten some feedback, but we've not elicited feedback in, in terms of going, um, in, in terms of a formal, a, a formal way. So in everything that we've done, we've tried to include our community partners. I want to say the last training that we did for groundwater, we had over a hundred folks present. We actually had to turn some away. And we now are inviting those folks to a training that we're having with our assistant principals. And once we have connected with them, we're asking them for their feedback. But, um, you know, our community as a whole, we have over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people that reside in New Hanover County. So we've not done anything as large as that. But it is about moving our work outward so that we're connecting with other organizations that are doing the same kind of work so that we can get that feedback. And if we need to make changes or, um, make a shift or, or, or do something different with our, with our focus, we, we surely can. So I guess to say all that is we're not opposed to that in terms of getting that feedback, it just has not been anything that we formally have done.
And I would say part of the work you did yesterday with the community groups was generating some information from them about what they wanted to see. It wasn't formal feedback, but it was part of that start process. And there's another organization that's coming into town through Live Oak called Community Impact.
Yes.
And they were there yesterday. And they're a data collection group. They're a very different kind of nonprofit organization, so I'm looking forward to working with them as well on, uh. Yeah, Collective Impact, excuse me.
Yeah, and, you know, and we're really excited again about the board committee because, you know, we have, um, received primarily our direction internally from our group. And we started kind of with an articulated what at the very beginning and, and we have implemented that. But now that we will have a board committee, you know, and, and looking at establishing some metrics or, um, you know, clarifying our course, expanding, we're really excited about what that's gonna mean to our work group as well.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Item twelve, consensus items, personnel, appendix G, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item number B, change of school assignment, appendix H, Julie Askew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask that the board approve the school change, the school change assignment as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, old business, item A, Dustin's Greenhouse, appendix I, Dr. Markley.
You heard the presentation last week from Dustin's Greenhouse. I'm asking tonight for the board to approve us working with them on the student program, subject to Mr. Bullard reviewing any MOUs between us and that organization.
Excitedly move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
That's fantastic.
All right, uh, item fourteen, new business, item A, grant of easement distribution with Piedmont Natural Gas. Appendix J, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we're asking the board approve an easement. This is at the, um, schools of Blair Elementary and Noble Middle School. This will provide, uh, easements to Piedmont Natural Gas and will provide gas service to these facilities.
Okay, so this does not impact the school in any way? Correct? Impact the property? It's just some along the.
This is, uh, along the backside of the school, um, both Noble and Blair. It's on the, uh, uh, it runs along the northern property boundary. It will not affect any of the, um, usable, uh, area or portion of the site.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item A?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a safety factor involved with this at all?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a safety factor involved with this at all?
Like burying, throw it through under the ground.
Oh, no, there's, there's not in, in, in burying the service. No, the, the, the line would be installed underground. It would be tested, be pressure-tested before it would ever be put into service. You know, there's, that's, and, and we document where it is so that in, in the future, if there was ever any digging or anything, you know, we, we know that that line is there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item B, NC Works Career Coach Program, MRO, uh, MOU, appendix K, Dr. Smith.
Yes, would ask the board's approval of the North Carolina, um, Works Career Coach, um, uh, MOU. This is, um, an ongoing agreement that we've had with, um, Cape Fear Community College. This allows for career coaches to be present in our high schools to support our students. Would just ask this with conditional approval of an addendum to the MOU that would reference, um, I think it's Jessica's Law.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jessica's Law, also, excuse me, um, reference to, um, compliance with the provisions of all laws regarding confidentiality. of all laws regarding confidentiality of student records, and then also the community college sell throughout the term of the NWO for at least three years after maintaining commercial general liability. And for some reason, this was in our initial MOU, but somehow got lost in translation in being a part of the renewal. So we would just ask that these things, which the community college has agreed to in the past, be added to this MOU, but we would ask for the board's approval tonight.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have any feedback on how this is going?
The only thing that I've heard specifically, personally, is that it's, it's just incredible, just the work that they're doing, the response from, from, from the students, and that was primarily last year. I don't know if Mr. O'Brien has heard anything specific about this year.
Just to run it again, and to create resources for our students to be able to connect on campus, and then be able to take courses at the community college, and it hurts them at all.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I can speak a little bit to it as well, they're over the moon about it, Dr. Morton is so excited to have this, and it's just, it's a huge benefit to our students. We're excited about it.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C, capital project for mobiles, mobiles?
Mobiles.
Appendix L?
Really a change in the description or the scope of work for a capital project. Replacement of mobile units is included in the current 2019-20 capital budget, and includes one unit at Bellamy and one unit at New Hanover High School. Since we are redistricting, and since we're in the, you know, we're in the process of, process of doing that, as well as looking at our, our capacities and what our capacities will be after redistricting, we think it would be a better expenditure of funds to look at a lease instead of looking at purchase. So what we're asking is really to change the description for these two mobile unit projects, that we look at one leased unit at Bellamy, and then holding off on the high school, New Hanover High School unit, and look at a leased unit for Ogden as well. We've had some growth in our elementary schools, Ogden was, is now our most overcrowded elementary school, and we think that this would be a better use of those funds. There's no change in the budget, we don't anticipate using all of the budget that was allocated, but we do want to change this from a purchase and install to a lease.
Because you don't think you'll need it a long time, is that why?
We think that, you know, depending on the outcome of elementary redistricting, we're, we're looking at the plans based on our building capacity without mobile units, and we're looking at about 108% as a, as a median over capacity. We think that we could, we, we may need to shuffle around, relocate some mobile units, and hopefully retire some of our older units. So, answer to your question, that's correct, we don't think that we'll need these two units.
And if we had to hold it over for a second year, would we still be a cost savings?
It, we would, it would be, two years is about the, anything over two years, you want to start looking at a purchase.
Mr. Anderson, so do we need to kind of look at what mobile units we have right now during the redistricting process? I know that there's, we're talking about elementary right now, and I think I've talked maybe to you or to Tim about some areas at elementary schools that have the area to put mobile units, and I know some of the principals are interested in that, especially at some of our smaller schools.
Yeah, and I've, I've pulled some information together for the redistricting committee. Each year, we, we, well, we maintain a, a listing of our mobile units, and each year we'll do an assessment on those, just give them a general condition grade from, you know, good condition, poor, fair, so forth. So I'm going to bring that, it gives you a total number of units and where they are and a general, general condition of that unit.
And then I think it's also important that, you know, for our next bond cycle, which is coming up, if we're looking at elementary schools to reduce them with the elementary schools Pine Valley and possibly Mercy Williams, I know we're expenditure at Alderman, if we're going to end up building those schools bigger, it may make sense that before we actually build those, we actually have some modular units available to accommodate the additional space, so this way, when the bond project's done, you can move those kids directly into those buildings.
That would be ideal. I think that's an appropriate use of mobile units.
Well, one of the places you got it right this time was College Park. When we built the bigger College Park, we're already seeing a growth, and that's, was one of our largest schools in terms of more students this year than we anticipated.
Where are they coming from? I mean, there's nowhere to build around there.
Well, it's coming from a couple of things. That's a neighborhood, that's a neighborhood that's slowly aging out, and younger folks are buying those houses, because of the, in, in the, if you're a young family, those are some of the more affordable home areas in town near the university. Some, some university folks are moving in and going into that area, so, and, and there is, if you go back to some of the neighborhoods around there, there are some areas that are, that are building. So it's a, it's just a neighborhood that's, that's flipping over from older, older to younger again, some small growth, things like that that are doing that.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, item C?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I guess the only thing that I would say is if, are we considering short-term leases, a one-year or a two-year?
We're looking at a one-year lease, we'll have an extension option at the end of that lease, but we would go two-year leases the max.
So the break even is two years, about, two or three?
Uh, two years.
Okay.
I would not recommend leasing over two years.
The bubble you were talking about of the fifth graders, they, they'll be gone next year, right? Where they gone this year?
The bubble is middle school right now. And probably seventh or eighth, seventh, eighth, yeah, currently seventh grade. We have seen some higher than, some, our kindergarten numbers look up this year. Now, they're still, they're up based on natural growth, that bubble that's currently in seventh grade, we're, we don't, that still was the largest kindergarten group we've had in a while. But our kindergarten numbers are, are higher than they were last year, and look, they're more natural 2%, 3% growth, as opposed to a 5% or 10% jump like that seventh grade group was.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item 15, correspondence, does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share?
I did meet for the first time with the census committee, and I will be trying to be innovative and work with the school system, try to figure out ways that we can go ahead and do that. One of their focuses was five-year-olds and under, and, you know, that's our incoming kindergarten class. So as we move forward, we'll look for ways, I think, to be innovative and help the census department or Commerce Department, the Census Bureau, try to figure out, you know, how they can do that, it's important for our county.
Good. All right, thank you. Item 16, announcements. The Title IX Committee is scheduled for Monday, September 16th, 2019, at 3:30, right here in the Board of Ed Center. Nelson, they're, apparently they're, I guess the, the county commissioners meeting is at 4:00 that same day.
Yes.
But I don't know that-
There is not any discussion on the resolution to sell the hospital? That's all coming from the dais, they're all, there's not going to be a discussion on that. There's going to be a vote, but it's not open for public comment since it's just a resolution.
Right.
I don't know if our-
I think it would be very difficult to reschedule 31 different people, because I think that's what's on our list. So my feeling is that we would just leave the committee for the same time, is that-
I agree.
Okay. All right, is that okay with you?
We'll make it work.
All right. All right, so it will remain at 3:30 PM right here. Public input on redistricting will be held Tuesday, September 17th, at 5:00 PM at Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. The calendar committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday, September 19th, at 4:00 PM at the Board of Ed Center.
I, I would encourage-
Question?
There's a, got an innovative proposal coming to that committee, so if you can't be there, you might want to just check the notes on that committee.
And the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be held Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, at 5:30 in the Board of Ed Center right here. Now, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to, it's not listed, Mr. Bullard.
The statute, cite is going to be 143-318.11A6 for personnel.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.
So the only one we're going to need in there is Ben is John.